I tell you that you can see the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every injustice for all. Thank you all.
First one in business, as it usually is, is public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening? Okay. All right. We have one set of minutes to approve, and they are the minutes of our December 3 meeting. And I make a motion that we move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of December 3 as shown. Does anybody have any exceptions or concerns about the minutes of December 3? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Nothing? All those in favor? Great. Thanks. Next order of business tonight is our correspondence items, and we have items A through J. And I make a motion that we move to accept and approve the list of 10 correspondence items, A through J, as shown. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about these 10 items?
I had a question on C regarding the home rule petition. Do you know where that is? I know that it was going to come back to us, but did it?
So we're having a little bit of, I don't know, a misunderstanding? We're not putting that well. So the direction that we got from town council was that, as from your advice, that we put it forward to town meeting, and then that we create a new legislative body, and then a new committee, or not new necessarily, but a committee from the body, let's say body, said, no, we need to have a specific location. And then we said, that's not what our town council said, so we wanted Lisa Mead to advise us, and kind of, well, cut out the middlemen, so to speak, and led them to House Council and this committee, and then legal council figured it out.
Get back to us.
So that's kind of where it still stands. We're drafting a response to attorney de Freitas to that effect, but we've asked for Lisa Mead to advise us to do that.
Yeah. And she just hasn't gotten...
No, it sounds like that the legislature has changed some of their practice, and they've kind of tightened things up. So it's my understanding that they're really requesting the name of the business and the address of the business in the legislation that goes to town meeting. And so that is, of course, not what this board and what town meeting...
What we did.
So we are planning to respond with that information, and we're thinking of bringing this back to this board for a future agenda item to discuss, you know, how you'd like to kind of proceed.
Right. We would, of course, need your direction, whether to move... If that's true, the only resolution is to go back to town meeting and then put on the warrant.
That's my understanding.
So on prior licenses of that type, there has been no name, address. It's just been a license to the town to go through the regular application process and go there. So Kate's involved, correct?
Yep. So I'm at with Reverend Hogan, and she said, you know, at the time, I think in the past, with the economy, the way it was, they were a little bit, you know, the way she put it, was a little looser with kind of the requirements that they needed for this type of liquor license. But now they are really, this is kind of what they're asking for now, is the specific address and name of the business and that kind of thing. So it's, I mean, it's new.
It was surprising.
Yeah.
I don't understand fully either.
I know. It just flies in the face of the typical rules.
Well, perhaps because it was a one-off. It's a one-off, as opposed to the last time we sought a number of liquor licenses. It was a group of liquor licenses, and it was done under, there had been a change to the law by, I think it was Governor, it might have been Patrick, where they had a municipal economic bill of some type, where they allowed communities to reach out and get more. And when we had the Parker Street project coming in, that's when we went for those additional ones with nothing attached to them. It's interesting, though, if indeed they are seeking to have addresses, because I think that's important on other issues, on other related type of, similar to what we have on our agenda tonight, on other licenses. And if the legislature's doing it for liquor...
It's true.
I think the board should take note.
Okay. No, it's true. I would prefer having that direction ahead of time, if that policy was true with the committee, but so be it.
Okay.
So when, as we draft, we expect to have for your next meeting, if not shortly thereafter, a memo with our advice from town council, potentially a letter on behalf of the board back to attorney de Freitas.
Okay. So does anybody have any other questions about the other items on here? Okay. So all those in favor of the correspondence items, acceptance. Thank you. This week's consent agenda consists only of the approval of the ad hoc committees, and I make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item A. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Green community committees, local emergency planning committee, local license authority, and the master planning committee, plan steering committee, those are the groups in question. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about those four groups?
Yeah. In a similar fashion, we polled Michelle Resendez one, since we're now doing the motion. She was also on the list for the man in Green Communities Committee, so I think we should call her name as well.
Sorry. Thank you.
No problem. All right. Other than that, everyone okay with Consent Agenda Item A? Raise your hand, please. Four. Thank you. Okay. Now, I want to, other stuff. The next item is an application for one-day liquor license for Chris Arsenal. How you doing? You can just read the motion. You can sit down if you want.
You get comfortable.
You can sit at those front two.
At the front table.
Let me just read the motion, and then we'll entertain the conversation. And the motion is to approve one-day license to Chris Arsenal for a private party at 81 Main Street on December 31, 2019, from 8:00 p.m. until 12:30 a.m. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Arsenal? I see that there is a...
Tip certified person, yeah.
Tip certified bartender, and both the police and fire departments had...
Would it say it was okay?
...noted they have no exceptions with the licenses presented. So, other than that, anybody have any questions?
Good to chat.
Glad we were able to get you in here before...
Yeah.
Before events.
I do appreciate that.
It was close, close.
What particular building is this going to be in?
81 Main Street's the old Maynard Trust building.
Yeah, the bank, the old bank.
Is that where it is? A bank?
Is that what it's called? I know it's the Maynard Trust on the outside of the building.
Which side of the street is that?
Left-hand side, as you're going down.
Where McWalter used to be?
Yeah.
Yes.
What's in there now?
Nothing.
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 Excellent.
It's owned by the...
Freedom Development Corporation?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
You're having entertainment, I assume, like a band or something?
A DJ.
DJ.
Yeah.
Is there any need for another license for that?
Don't believe so. We can research really quick, but at that point, he wouldn't be able to provide it, because this is the only time we could do it before now or then.
Yeah. I just don't want you to be shut down.
Sure.
Which is why we notified the police.
The police, except, they already knew about that, so...
Right. Right. Good point. And Becky's pretty good about knowing what check mark, you know, what the checks...
It's probably kind of similar, kind of-ish, similar to the sip and stroll and things like that, where they have businesses that don't typically have a Victor O'Leary's license that...
Right.
Or an entertainment license that they, the bands play in it. It's not for an extended, it's only for three or four hours, but still, maybe that's kind of along the same lines.
Nice way to ring in the new year.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Good luck. Have fun.
Yeah, have fun.
Now everyone knows where your party is, too.
It's kind of hard to have a prohibition party and get a special license in front of...
Yeah, there you go.
But that's okay.
It's okay. All right. Does anyone else have any questions? You guys, anything from you guys? No?
I think it's actually really exciting that they're using the vacant...
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah. And so just a word, the goal of this is to kick off some more excitement around reusing and either underutilized spaces or unused spaces.
Nice.
So we're trying to find ways, there's a group of people I'm working with, we're trying to find ways to use spaces in town that are not being used, and different ways to have community events. And this is the kickoff, and we're trying to look towards one, towards the springtime as well.
Fantastic.
So we may, I may reach out to you guys to get some feedback on that before we start really...
So I'm guessing the building is in pretty decent shape inside.
Yeah, it is in decent shape, yeah. Yeah, it's good.
Very good. Perfect. They're going to have, like, people dressed up like 20s-type style, or...
Great Gatsby, you're talking about?
A guy suit up in a temperance party. I can just imagine these striped suits with the hats, and the police are going to be like, oh, boy, we got...
That's the recommendation. We'll see how it goes.
Very nice.
Okay. All those in favor of approval? Good luck.
Have a fantastic time. Enjoy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Have a nice holiday. Enjoy New Year's.
So we'll have it signed for you tomorrow.
All right. We have a presentation from the Regional Housing Services Office. Good evening.
Hi. I'm Liz Rust. I'm the Director of the Regional Housing Services Office. This is good.
Yeah. If it's okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to provide a little bit of an introduction to Ms. Rust. So since the, since the town of Maynard has adopted the housing production plan and the inclusionary zoning bylaw, there has been an increase in housing production in town. Maynard's added approximately 22 affordable units this year, and the affordable units were created under the local initiative program, which is new for our town. And it requires the municipality to annually certify to the Department of Housing and Community Development that each one of the low and moderate income units continues to be consistent with their regulations and guidelines.
Okay.
It's also crucial that the town's affordable housing data, called subsidized housing inventory, or SHI, is accurate and efficiently administered. So the reason we invited Liz Rust here today is because staff is recommending that the town of Maynard join the Regional Housing Services Office to assist with these tasks associated with affordable housing. And the Town Administrator's Office has applied to the Community Preservation Committee for funding for FY '21 to join this regional housing group. So, and also the Office of Municipal Services budget would also contribute, you know, if we were to join. So at a future meeting, we'd be asking the board to consider supporting and, you know, joining this Regional Housing Services Office. But today, I just wanted to kind of make the board aware that we had applied for this funding, and also bring in Liz to talk a little bit more about this, you know, regional group and why, you know, what kind of services they provide. And so Liz is the Director of Regional Housing Services Office, and she can share a little bit more about this intermunicipal collaborative.
Great. Well, thank you.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Do you have...
She's going to start now.
Yeah. So...
Oh, sorry, again.
Yep. Great. And then how do I do it? Do I point it here?
Let me just make sure it's on. Is it on on the side?
Maybe I'll just start while it goes.
We have a copy in front of us, so...
Oh, Liz, you're up.
Oh, there we go. Okay.
But they're seeing the same thing on their computers.
Yeah. Okay, so that's the...
Oh.
There we go.
There you go.
So just a few slides to introduce the Regional Housing Services Office. So this first slide talks about the implementation. So this started back in 2011, and it went through MAPC with their DLTA grants. I don't know if you're familiar with those, but it was really supported by the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, and it took three years to really put the office together. It was put together through a municipal, intermunicipal agreement. That's the legal structure of the office. And it's in its ninth year, and we call that a sustainable model. Communities have withdrawn, new communities have joined, we've moved offices, we've changed staff, so we think we've been through a number of transitions to see that it would be sustainable over time. It's a little blurry.
These screens are great.
Okay.
Looks a lot better in front of them.
Okay, very good. So this is the actual service model. You can see there's eight communities that are part of it. The town of Concord is the lead community, and what that means is they are responsible for all the procurement. So there are four people in the office. We work as contractors to the town of Concord, and the member communities just buy into that service. So there's no procurement that member communities need to do in terms of RFPing, or getting staff, or any of that work. You really just sign the intermunicipal agreement, and you pay and buy, essentially buy a certain number of hours, and you just get that support. The model works that if you use too many hours, you buy up, and we sort of do a true-up in March, and if you've bought too many hours, you get a refund into the next year. So, and that's been a, again, so nine years of sort of working through that process. The intermunicipal agreement allows for nine communities in total, so should Maynard decide to join, that would be it in terms of communities. So this slide really talks about the work plan, and I'm not going to go through all of this detail, but I think Megan really highlighted some of the particular tasks. There's inventory management, monitoring both ownership and rental, and local support. That might be something like helping the Affordable Housing Trust with, I know that they're considering a rental assistance program or other kinds of things, maybe new LIT projects, maybe development agreements from some local developers who might be doing some building in town or what have you. We also have a website where people can come to look for housing, or we have the information on the inventory for the different communities, and it's sort of a referral site. This is a brief picture of the budget, just a lot of numbers, really, but you can see the different towns and what they're contributing, and it's really a wide variety of levels of support. Sudbury has a high level of support. There's a lot of some detailed programs that are administered there, and you would come in, I think, on the lower side, if I can really get there, like Wayland. Maybe you'd be around Wayland, you'd probably be a little under Wayland support. So there's really a wide variety, depending on what kind of, as I say, support, or how many hours. Really, it's an hour, purchased hour kind of model. And most of the expense is the staffing. There's a little bit of program expense, and there's some administrative fee for Concord to support the technology and the rent and some of the utilities and that kind of thing. And then this, just a summary page, that successfully completing years of operation. It's really driven by a selectman and the town leadership, so it's not mandated by the state by any stretch, and it's not, I don't know, it's just supported by town leadership. I can leave it at that. So every year, every selectman is asked to sign the IMA, so it's an annual proactive re-engagement to make sure that it still continues to meet the town's needs. There's resource efficiency is the other part, is that you're buying into technical expertise, so you don't have to hire specific consultants or other kinds of support. You sort of buy into hours. We have four people in the office, all qualified to support any number of programs and activities. And then you get a regional approach to share housing with your budding neighbors. And we find that many communities are going through very similar kinds of opportunities and issues and programs and decision-making.
So I noticed in your sustainable model, that two communities withdrew. What was the reason for that?
So they wanted to take it in-house. They had staff that had been trained and up to speed, and they wanted to administer the programs inside.
Okay.
With the, I sit, as you know, as the board knows, on the Affordable Housing Trust, and Affordable Housing Trust certainly supports this initiative and getting on some assistance. Part of the reason, if not the majority of the reason, is that, you know, as a volunteer board that we have, we would not be able to, as an Affordable Housing Trust, to do the work that needs to be done, certainly without the expertise that's necessary to make sure it's done correctly. And if we didn't do it, it would be calling upon town staff to do it, and again, our town staff does not necessarily have this expertise to assist us with this. And there are a number of things that will be benefit. Liz has attended several of our Affordable Housing Trust meetings, so I'm familiar with her work and the quality of the advice that she's given us thus far. So the Affordable Housing Trust certainly encourages and hopes that when this does come up for a vote, that we can approve it. My only concern, as always, is that we also get the support from the CPA to get the funding, so that we're not scrambling for, you know, $25,000 or whatever it happens to be, just to fund it.
Just $11,000, but...
Whatever the number is.
No, no, of course. I just wanted to scale it. And from the CPC, we're just asking, I'm just asking for $9,500, because some of it would be supported from the Office of Municipal Services budget. So, and as Liz mentioned, would be on the lower end of hours due to the size of our community.
That was actually maybe my question. So how does that work as far as when you're budgeting? Would you budget hours? Like, we would say that we will use so many hours per, you know, in order to stay at that level, or how...
Some communities budget a level of service. They want more service or less service. Some communities say, I have $15,000 to spend, and I'll take whatever hours that turns out to be.
Okay.
So it's kind of consistent year to year, but there's a little bit of an increase in hourly rate, like maybe $2, $2.25 or something year by year, so it's not exactly the same number of hours year to year. We go through that process in the fall. So we've done that already for next year, and so we have Budget A without Maynard, Budget B with Maynard. So we'll kind of see. I think Megan did a nice job in the CPC presentation of laying out the next steps. There's an advisory committee that would vote to accept Maynard, and they meet in February, and then the town manager of Concord has the ultimate authority to approve Maynard to join, and then it would come back to the intermunicipal agreement to be signed in May. So it would be a spring decision-making process. So just to get to your point again about the communities that withdrew, I should have mentioned that it was started, many communities have affordable housing consultants that they've worked with for a long time, and that consultant knows their inventory and their programs. In Bedford, their consultant left, got a new job, I think moved out of town, so they found themselves without anyone who knew about the affordable housing in town, so they were a real driver for joining this. And there was a community that had joined that then took it in-house, and then their affordable housing person also left the town and went on for some other opportunities, so that they've come actually back in and join the RHSO again. So it helps to diffuse dependence on any one person.
And the only comment I would make relative to these lists of towns, just to emphasize the fact, or clarify the fact, these really don't fit us socio-economically, but what you guys advise on is not that aspect of, it's more the process, and the process is the same regardless of where we are.
Exactly. And I think that the Affordable Housing Trust that you just started, and then the local initiative programs, and that regulatory framework, and that process that you'll go through, or your developers will go through, and what the municipal role is, that really is the same for all the communities, because that's really a state regulatory process.
Right.
Exactly.
So, Mr. Chairman, we're not looking to approve or anything. We just want to introduce Liz. Have any, you know, take any questions from the board you may have at this time, but potentially the next time you'll see this on the agenda is if and when, actually, it actually would have to be after the town meeting, because that's, well, if the CPC decides to accept the application, then it would have to go in the warrant for appropriate...
I think we'd try to come back next month to see if the board would consider joining, because the CPC's board votes in February, I think, to accept Maynard.
Oh, very good.
So, yeah, honestly, the timeline for the CPC application and joining this trust is not perfect. That's why, you know, I tried to get the CPC application in before, you know, meeting with the board, but I thought it aligned with our goals, and, you know, it made sense to at least put it in. But the town would have to make a commitment to ask to join within the next two months.
I think everyone would understand that you would be joining and going through the process, knowing that perhaps a town meeting, things might go a little differently than you originally planned.
Very good.
Okay. All right. So we'll do this next month, but can you do me a favor?
Yeah.
Before we get, you know, just so we have it, not because it has anything to do with this, just because you mentioned it, can you just, when we have this discussion next thing, can you just put it in the package, just kind of outline where the 22 new affordable units are?
Oh, sure.
Are they all on 129?
Good point.
Just where they are these days? If we have the information.
Okay.
And then what other affordable's coming online, too, in the next, you know, based on what we have in hand. But other than that, you know, we'll just go with the recommendations when we have the next discussion, see where we are, I hope. Well, thank you for coming in and sharing with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Happy holidays.
You too.
Open table. Open table. Nope. Come on. You need a dumpster?
Yeah.
All right. Well, there's a motion for a dumpster, so let me read the motion, and then we'll get to it. Oddly enough, motion to authorize the Town Administrator's Office to research a mutually beneficial solution for recycling management in Naylor Court. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. So what are we going to do, Greg?
Actually, I'm going to let Megan take the reading.
Okay.
Oh, sure. So we've been, you know, speaking with Open Table, a community, you know, partner here in town, about their need for a solution to their corrugated boxes, recycling, and, you know, I can have Janine speak to this, too. And so one option we were thinking about is, you know, we could have a dumpster, but the way their property is located, it's not suitable for a dumpster pickup. So if they were to have a dumpster, it would go on town-owned land, so that's an option. But also, you know, we had the ULI conference or session the other day, there had been some discussion about, you know, we have a lot of dumpsters in that area. So what could we do to kind of move them together and kind of move that process forward? So this, you know, came up at, I think, a good time, this conversation, about what is, what does the board, what kind of direction would you like to give, you know, staff to kind of work on that issue, but also, you know, there are community members that have needs and are kind of looking for solutions. And so, you know, Janine, if you want to kind of share about your reason you're here today?
Yeah. So after hearing about the Urban Land Institute doing their study, we realized if we were to invest money right now into making a suitable platform or surface in the municipal land for a dumpster, and putting the money into screening and things like that for only six months, only then to turn around and find out that the Urban Land Institute might have a better solution... might have a better solution for a centralized corrugated box area. We wanted to just find out tonight kind of where you're leaning. Um, currently, we have people with cognitive disabilities that come in and volunteer for us, who break down the boxes and put them into, um, portable toters. And it's not a great use of their skills or their time. And I would love to see us do that differently, but right now, that's the only option we have because our land isn't contiguous to the, to a way a truck could come in and pull away the corrugated boxes. So they all have to be taken out by toters right now. We have very little trash. We, we're pretty green. We have two toters a week of trash. Everything else is recycling. So it'd be really great to be able to centralize that in that basin area with other, um, maybe other restaurants or other businesses who have corrugated box, boxes and just have one dumpster instead of 12.
So are you saying that you wouldn't break down the boxes if you had a dumpster?
Oh, we'd break them down. That happens no matter what.
Oh, all right.
Yeah. But stepping them into a, a toter is what we're doing now, which is just such a waste of time.
So I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know how far off ULI is, but I don't think that's anything that's imminent.
Yeah.
Like, I don't think that's anything that might even happen in my lifetime.
Really?
That's just me.
I see. Okay.
Um, I'm not being, I'm not, and I, it was a great presentation. It was a lot of nice things discussed, but I honestly don't see how we're going to do some of those things in a, in a, in a timely fashion.
Okay.
I don't know if anyone else agrees in a timely manner to get them done because they all are going to require substantial dollars and cents be put to them. So I don't know where we're going to come up with that kind of money for that purpose with all the other things we have going on. But I would absolutely love to see a solution for you guys.
Centralize, yeah.
So I would, if it's for me, I would, I would absolutely, you know, give Greg's office the opportunity to, to work with you guys to get this done with, you know, and obviously Greg is going to go in the same direction I'm going to go, which is going to be to talk to Justin DiMarco, who's our new DPW director, and see where we can, how we can help, where we can do things to help you guys. Because there's obviously a need and, you know, you guys are such a great community partner and we want to continue that. So I just don't want you to get worried about ULI because I don't see that being a, like, we're 12 weeks out before we get the written report minimally. So we're at least, we're at least into the spring and then we're into, you know, um, visioning sessions and discussion sessions and everything else about what the potentials are and what the possibilities are. And then everything that was, everything that was vaguely discussed has to come into some architect or some developer's plan, which then has to be approved and discussed. So we're a long way off from, you don't want to be stacking cupboard up that long.
No, I don't think so.
The one, the one, but I think the one thing that came from that is the fact that maybe we should, you know, just take a little bit of a, um, head start, especially with centralizing the dumpsters. So I think that's something that came out of that conversation where that is something that we could work on probably.
It's not going to be a part of that.
Absolutely. That's, I mean, I thought it was more going to be based on the preliminary discussions that I heard prior to, that it was going to be more about a traffic flow scenario. How do we improve the traffic flow and how do we, you know, kind of get some of the dumpsters that are involved in the traffic flow and everything into a different area or into one spot. And it's kind of, you know, I, I don't know what the intent was originally, but it kind of morphed into a whole, some different things that I never expected to hear discussed. So, um, I agree that the dumpster issue is a huge issue, but in the meantime, I think for your purpose, it needs to be, you know, a little quicker than that timeframe. I think the best is to work with Greg and Megan.
And what are, what about utilizing or teaming up with other restaurants and for them to using?
El appeal, I've talked to already. We, we could possibly do that.
Yeah?
I think that's what I think makes sense.
Right?
I mean, if we're, if we're going to, you know, work with one, one entity and try to make a recycle solution, this would be a good opportunity to start the conversation with the other, um, you know, neighbors and see. Absolutely. It could pick a benefit.
Right.
And if we started with recycling.
You kind of got to deal with the three on this side, the two on that side.
Yeah, and you got on the other side.
Yeah, it's not just going to be one.
Because you, no one's going to want to walk through the parking lot with, with cowboy wheels. So.
Right.
But whatever, you know, however you decide, but I, absolutely, we should, you know, we would look, we, I'm speaking for myself.
I, I tend to agree. I think the, um, the other mix, missing part of this would be we have that recently devised parking authority.
That's right.
Because one of the concerns that I have is the businesses that are already, you know, they talk to us all the time about the concern about their parking, their availability of parking. We took four spots for firefighters that I've heard repeatedly, you know, "It's a busy movie night and those four spots aren't being used." And, um, you know, so then you take more and the complaints just increase. So, uh, whatever we do has to involve a complete discussion, not only with your group, but with the businesses that are in the area, um, you know, the parking group and, you know. So maybe the Business Alliance could even get, uh, involved in some way, but, uh, because everybody sort of has the same desire to beautify, uh, the area, make it look a little better, even if we don't do the entire project, um, but with as minimal impact as, as possible to the people who are, who are actually, uh, you know, purchasing and, and utilizing the businesses that are there.
I think it's good. I think it's a good opportunity to realize that public-private partnership potential of a lot of these.
Yeah.
But, um, but I, I think with such a good relationship that we do have with Open Table and how, as to your point, Mr. Chairman, how critical the service that they already provide to the community that is not coming out of, like, Town Hall, it's ideal. So if any way we can support them is good. And if it also shows how potentially successful this relationship will be in this aspect, that could then inspire more partnerships and collaboration. And then, so yes, maybe it'll start small, one or two, but we have to work that out.
You set an example, you set an example that way.
Very good.
Yeah.
So, we're just going to throw it on YouTube. Let's vote to do that.
No, that's, that's perfect.
So are you concerned about proximity to your location?
Well, we're going to throw it up over the wall. And there's a place that we're looking, Megan and I have looked, it's not going to take anybody's parking, which is another really good thing. Doesn't take a spot. We've got a pretty good plan. Um, and we can just throw the boxes up on the grassy part and then put them in. So it's not a lot of caring. So.
So any of the, um, do any of the changes being made in the, in the, your neighbors make for better access?
With the new?
To, to behind the building type of thing?
With that other building?
You know, like?
No.
No?
Unfortunately. You're talking about 30, the one right after us, 37? Yeah, yeah. No.
The formerly attached building. Is that what you're talking about?
Oh, no, the other direction, the other, that rebuilt.
As you look.
The new, the new construction.
Any access ways that would allow, you know, access to the back of the building somewhere where we could figure something out, but?
We've been talking to Greg Adams and we're working with him. He's been great. And we're, it's complicated.
So it is.
It's not as big of a slam dunk as we thought it was going to be. But he's been working with us, so.
So I'm sure that Craig and Megan and everybody will come to a, a great solution and then come back and we'll, you know, approve anything we have to, I think.
Great. All right.
From my point. But we have to vote, so.
Yeah.
All those in favor of that plan?
That's reasonable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you, Janine. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
New Can. Update from New Can. Thank you guys for coming in.
Thank you for having us.
So we have, for, we've spent October and November on looking at a lot of properties. I think we looked at about 86 properties. Um, we've narrowed the selection down. We'd like to get a little bit of guidance from the board. Um, and I'll give you generally where we, I, I think we submitted the first two pages of the report we gave to the Realtor. Um, they gave us a very exhaustive list of everything that was on the market at one time or another and things that hadn't been on the market for a while. Um, first property we identified, I don't believe is in the zone and I understand likely we shouldn't pursue, is up by Maynard Crossing. The, uh, there's a small...
The White House?
Right.
The White House?
Yeah, a little White House.
Yeah, it's, it's just recently been cleared out.
Yeah.
So you can see it. It's really broken down.
I think it's 140, 140 Parker Street is, uh, the office building.
The office, right next to the office building.
In front of there.
Oh, okay. All right. Sorry.
Our understanding is that Ken Olson may have owned it at one point and it was used for, as a meeting place for, we learned a lot about.
It's got a lot of history.
I'm sorry?
It has a lot of history.
Yeah. So we looked at that one and, and unfortunately, it's not in the zone. And there was a suggestion made that we probably shouldn't try to get it to be put in the zone because there could be a lot of resistance in there. We, um, looked down Powder Mill. We found one property potentially down there, but it's right next to, or it's in, in the same, very, very close to, uh, children's playtime.
Camp time.
So before we even made any further inquiries, we wanted to get some feedback, whether we should pursue that or not. Um, we, we, we looked from Erickson's down to the traffic light, um, at, uh, 27 and I believe it's 117. Found nothing along that strip. Um, from, uh, there's the old French restaurant across, diagonally across from McDonald's. Um, that's a possibility, but again, we would need some direction from the board, whether you're comfortable with that location in light of how close it is to the intersection. Um, the, that's the French restaurant. There is, um, we, we've looked at the mill. There's some issues about whether a marijuana operation could go there. Um, and then we identified a few, we're trying to, um, St. John, in accordance with what you had told us early on, see if we can find something that's not, 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 no, but we, we, we tried to find something that is not down in the basin.
Right.
So we looked all around.
Yeah.
Then we found a few that were closer to the basin. We looked at, um, 74 to 80 Main. That's two different buildings. Um, it, it's the, uh, Amory's Pub Building. And then I understand what used to be a credit union at one point behind there. It's now a two-family, non-conforming two-family house.
Oh, yeah.
But I think those properties are now under agreement.
Amory's Tomb?
Or Amory's, uh, no, the, the bar.
That was.
It used to be Amory's.
There's a vacant next to.
Yeah.
So if we're talking, so if you're looking at Amory's, the brewery.
The brewery, it's, yeah.
Including the Amory's.
They're both, they're both full right now. The upstairs is pretty much vacant because they, the upstairs, not that, that's where we're going to go, but.
That's what I thought. The old coyote, the old coyote.
But that building, we looked at the front building and then the back building became available. And, and there's, I'm not going to, I won't bore you with the story, but there's an issue.
So there's an issue with Sanctuary.
And, and the way the parking is set up. The front building doesn't have parking, so it's going to get an easement from the back building, which is currently being used as a two-family house with a two-car garage. But as we got deeper and deeper in all the history, now we understand why all the parking is with the rear building.
And that's pretty much, that one would be, um, you would get the parking access from River Street, right?
Right.
So, and so that's, again, right down the street from Green Star Herbals, which is right there on River Street also. So, right.
But, but not only that, the Sanctuary has the daycare there. Don't they have a daycare?
For the preschool.
Yeah, preschool, I mean.
The other side of the building.
Yep. There's a property, um, so you, if you think about, you head down River Street, you turn right, um, to go, to, to, to head down to where we were talking about, where you can head left to go to Sanctuary. There is apparently was a building that was torn down that was straight ahead.
Oh.
It's been purchased. Didn't Jimmy, Jimmy McDonald purchase that?
Yeah.
I don't, yeah.
Yeah, that's right. That has been, yeah.
I'm telling you, we turned over every stone that we could. Um, we looked at the, the Maynard Trust Building. I think that one may.
That's the one that's down.
Be under agreement. The one the young man was here about.
Yeah.
Um, the, um, George's Building, the one in the back, which I recall from the meeting in August.
Oh, yeah, the one that's next to the Open Table. Right.
Right.
Next to Open Table.
Yeah. And then he's got the pla, he has the, the retail in the front, but we really weren't comfortable with taking a space that's going to displace three of the current small businesses. But those are the areas that we've looked at. What we'd like to do is see if we can get some guidance from the board as to where you might prefer we own our focus.
But to be honest with you, every property that you just mentioned, it doesn't appeal to me. I mean, that's just me.
Is there, and you said that there's, there's issues with, with the mill or what about down by, um, I'm just trying to think, like down by the mobile station where that, there's that property. I just guess it's a...
Where Melissa used to?
Where Melissa across the way?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the one that wouldn't allow, that's the one that we...
Yeah, it's right across the office with, with the dental. There's a dental place next to the church.
Oh, they don't allow retail in there?
No. One across from the mill.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Nice building. It has, always has a fully sign or full sale.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was an individual condo building. I think it's Parker Street Avenue.
The very first place they took.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they won't allow retail in there.
Yeah, okay.
Next to the church.
Next to the church.
Right, right next to the church, yeah.
Yeah.
I remember you, you all did say that was the place.
Yes. We did. And it wouldn't work. And then we went back again. It still wouldn't work, so.
On the 31 Main there.
Oh, yeah.
The one that got knocked down, like 31, the one that got knocked down is, of all the locations that they're talking about, that's not.
That would be the only one.
Right next door to the other place.
Yeah.
But that's the thing.
How much parking are you gentlemen, I mean, in an ideal world, parking?
I, I, I don't think, you know, again, everybody still has the focus of what happened last November. The stores that are opening now, you don't even hear about it in the news. It, there's one that opened in Lynn. The police chief said, "No parking in the lot for opening day. It was going to be on a Saturday. You have to park down the street someplace, bus the people in." By that afternoon, there were so few cars, he said, "You can park in the lot."
Right. No, I know. So, but you would prefer parking, I assume?
We, sure. We would prefer, we'd prefer to have parking, yeah.
Okay. I was just thinking about, some of these locations do and some of them don't.
Yeah, some of them do, some of them don't.
More convenient than others. And, yeah, yeah. I'm not that familiar with the French restaurant, so I don't even, I...
I think they have parking behind there.
They do have some parking behind.
There's a little bit of parking behind there, but it's, it's a...
Very limited. It's tight. It's tight.
Tough in and a tough out.
It's right next to Excelsior, right on the corner.
No, I know where it is. I just, uh, I would love something to go in there.
Oh, I would too. Absolutely.
Yeah, but that's a bad location for traffic. You kidding me?
There you go. So this is, this is what the gentlemen are looking for. Like, they are not from here like y'all are. So if they're somewhere, Jack has some experience in the area and I understand both of you do, but y'all live here, so.
At this point, we've driven, I've driven around so much now, I, I...
I assume you know the town probably better than I do.
No, I wouldn't go that far.
So, no, but that's, to the, my point is like you've seen the French restaurant. I never have. So if there, if, maybe if there's some insight you could even give to the board, that'd be helpful. Either way, that's...
Like, does the mill, is that a fine, an acceptable location?
Yeah, I like it. I like the idea.
Yeah, I did too. I mean, if there's a way to make that work, but then...
I don't mind the mill.
Yeah. If, if they're open to that, but is there a zoning problem there or?
What's the zoning for the mill?
Yeah.
Um, so it is allowed. Retail cannabis is allowed in the mill, um, but has to be 300 feet away from K through 12. And so Knowledge Beginners does have it. But the property is so big that there are a number of buildings that would qualify and be further than 300 feet.
I kind of feel like if you went, almost if you did, like, the, the Old Battle Roadside. I mean, I don't know where, but, but like that kind of entrance.
You got the parking too there.
It would be so removed from.
Away, yeah. And you got lots of parking.
Without divulging too much of the, because it is between two private entities, so I don't want you to give away what the mill's told you necessarily, but whatever you can reveal to us publicly. Like, how receptive has the bill, mill been to you guys?
Um, we, we've got, we, we brought in another real estate party, um, who's been having ongoing discussions with them.
Okay.
And, and let me put it to you this way. It wasn't just, "No, that's not happening."
Right. That's what I'm looking for. Okay. Okay.
You know, this, it, it's, what, what's fascinating about the business is that it is, it's like a chess game. And by that, I mean, the problem, one of the problems of a chess game, and by that I mean, the problem, one of the problems of putting companies like this in the mill looked like it was gonna be resolved until the Senate Banking Chair out of Idaho, I think it is, said no, last week. So, you know, it's a interesting, many moving pieces. Maynard, our little, our little venture in Maynard, Massachusetts is being influenced by somebody out in Idaho, but that's the way it is.
And they grow potatoes there.
Yeah.
I have family in Idaho, so please.
Maybe he's influencing it.
Any of them know the senator out there?
I don't, I mean, I, I don't know that the, I mean, at least to me, you know, with the, the property that was demolished on River Street, that's, I think McDonald owns it, but certainly that, that piece of property is out of the way, it's away from kids, it's, you know, it would be a secluded spot, that does not bother me much, but the mill is, you know, and the mill's gonna put you somewhere where, you're not gonna go in the entrance, that big entrance, they're gonna put you in a spot where you have your own door in and your own door out.
That's true, yeah.
They're gonna seclude you in that, in that regard, so that's up to them, but, you know, those type of spots, but I just don't know where the, how, how it fits in the other ones, parking-wise and otherwise, you know, and then that becomes an issue, you know, do you wanna have vans and buses going to a rented parking lot type of thing like they do in Hudson? I don't know who wants to do that, but.
Yeah, no, we don't wanna do that. And I don't think that there's gonna be that level of, of, we think obviously the store will do well, but we don't think it's gonna be with people standing outside in line.
Right.
Well, they'll have appointments, likely.
Yeah.
For the planning board.
The planning board wants you to shop by appointment?
That's what they've done for the other two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As part of their special permit.
I'm trying to compare your summary report with the zoning map, so.
Okay.
And there's nothing else on Powder Mill, huh? Other than.
No, we could find.
You're kind of limited over there.
Um, no, there's only one in Powder Mill. There may have been two, but they both have the same issue, next, right.
They're, they're both in that.
Near the.
Right near Jam Time.
Yep, yep, yep.
What was the other one, the ATM booth?
I'm sorry?
Oh, never mind.
ATM?
Well, isn't that, that's gonna be a coffee shop, I think, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, well, still working on that.
The possibility of it, but I don't know that that's gonna happen either, who knows?
Really?
We haven't seen anything yet.
I thought they.
Well, he, they, he came to an incomplete reports.
It's, well, right.
Yeah.
In a public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's working through the system.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, personally, again, I would prefer not, you know, again, downtown, downtown, just because, you know, right on Main Street, right on Nason Street, like that type of thing, I.
We stayed away from Nason.
Right, yeah.
We, Nason, we looked at everything, but we didn't.
Yeah.
I mean, if I, if I had a preference, Powder Mill would be the best area, because you're away from the downtown, and, and in the other places, what Chris was talking about, that's also away.
Powder Mill, I don't.
There's just nothing there.
But there's not much on Powder Mill right now that's available.
No.
Right.
The immediate butter on the River Street project is the place that is moving, is moving forward.
Okay.
Yes, their competitor is next door.
Yeah.
Right next door.
That one, probably not, probably wouldn't work for you guys.
Right.
I mean, I definitely like the idea of the mill, just because of the parking, and because of, you know, it's just out of a little bit.
How big a space are y'all looking for?
It's gonna be subject to.
What's your find?
Yeah, I mean, we're not, we're not looking, we don't want something that's too big, we're not looking this to, for this to be a superstore.
Yeah.
Type situation.
Right.
Ideally, fifteen hundred square feet.
Okay.
I say, that's small.
So we looked at some.
I thought it was like five thousand you were going for.
I know, not necessary though, yeah.
No, I mean, we, there were some other things we could do if we had larger space, so I, I'd say somewhere between fifteen hundred and three thousand.
Okay.
But, and, and that's probably well more than we need.
Okay.
So, just to run it down, so I, I presume, I just wanna make sure that I cross these off, so up on Parker Street, in front of the, that old White House.
Yes.
At the entrance to the new market basket.
Should we, should we look into that, knowing that then it still has to go to town meeting?
Zoning, yeah.
I think you'd see a lot of resistance because of the, because of proximity to the school, even though it might be outside of the.
The zone.
The zoning requirement, I just think it might be too close to the school complex for some, some parents and some people, that's my opinion, but, I don't know.
It's also a timing thing, only because we don't already have a retail shop, which is, which is advantageous that you wanna get on the ground floor, I assume, however, the town doesn't have any level of, whether it be comfort or discomfort with, with an existing shop, like, so they wouldn't be able to tell you whether they think the White House is a good idea or not. Like, you're kind of, I mean, yeah, but I know time is against you. You have four months?
Three, three.
Three months?
Three, we have six months from October first.
There you go.
So.
So, I mean, I, yeah, it's not great for you guys, but, but I do appreciate you coming to the board and kind of filling them in, that's good.
No, I think we got, the heavy lifting part, we got done in the first sixty days, which was to look at every property we could, run them down, understand what was out there. I'm reasonably comfortable where we are.
Okay.
It, it's just a matter of, now we need a little bit more direction. If you tell us, you know, take a look at the Parker Street area, then we'll start to knock on doors, introduce ourselves, see what kind of resistance there is. The Powder Mill, we can look at that, though, again, we're gonna be right next to Jam Time.
Right.
Yeah.
Because that's the thing, I think it's different than being in the mill with Knowledge Beginnings being, because that space is so massive.
That thing, that is so massive that we've already.
Jam Time is just too close, yeah. That's, that's what I'm saying, like, I think it's, I personally think that that would be a, that would kind of be a public relations nightmare for.
Okay.
Them, you.
Which one are you talking about?
Jam Time.
Oh, yeah.
Just because, I mean, I can just imagine, I don't know, that, that's personal opinion, I don't know how anybody else feels. Does anybody else have, anyone else wanna weigh in?
Well, I think if they could pursue Mill and Main, I think that'll be, that'll be probably ideal.
And what are your thoughts on the, the French restaurant?
No, that's, I'm against that.
I think that's a.
The location is not.
I don't know how you're gonna get people in and out of there, down that.
Yeah. I mean, if there's, if there's a plan for it, I mean, I don't, you know, that's a little bit further out.
It would be nice to get some utilization out of that property.
Absolutely.
What's there for parking?
Again, it's in the back.
Parking is down around back.
So you just have to know.
I know what's, I know where it is, but I don't know what, I don't know what the parking looks like, though.
It goes down, it's, it's a flood plain, which is another area.
Yeah, because you're down, goes down, you know, the parking.
Right along the river where it floods in the, in the wintertime. I think Bruce Davidson owns some studio space down there.
Yeah.
David, I think he shared with Suburban Glass and also Bruce Davidson's shop, so it may be complicated, how much of the parking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's right there. I mean, it doesn't look like there's that many spots right there.
There isn't.
It might be.
And it's, that's probably, just, I'm not a traffic engineer, but from my experience driving around, the busiest intersection is that intersection.
Oh, it is, it is.
And then you got people coming out of McDonald's, crossing that way, and you got people coming out of Seven-Eleven, and, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You've got, you've got young teenagers that are.
Playing their game in the corner, yeah.
Frequently, the business right on.
That's true, too, yeah. So, and obviously, J.M. Cool is still, is still a business.
Who?
J.M. Cool, they're the, the old syrup.
Yeah.
Because that would be a nice location, too.
That would be a perfect place.
It would be.
Like Suburban Glass, across from Suburban Glass.
You'd go past Suburban Glass, and it's on the left-hand side.
Oh, yeah, the big two-story.
So, it's like an architect.
Yeah, yeah. It's got the parking and everything.
That's the one with the construction company?
Yes.
Yeah, 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 but I don't know what they.
They're not going anywhere, there's.
J.M.C. Construction Management.
Yeah.
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 I'm trying to help you, I just.
No, I know.
You know.
You know what, Mr. Chairman, so I recommend, this is not, I don't know if they were expecting you all to tell them the exact perfect spot, but perhaps you, even if the board thinks of something later, or in your discussions in the, in the community, of course, send it to our office, we can forward it to the gentleman, or, or if they wanna come back, of course, we could ask them back.
I think that's on the contract.
Okay.
The purpose was to give you an update. We hadn't, we haven't talked to you in a while, we didn't want you to think that we'd gone totally silent. We had reached out to talk independently, because part of our issue is, we don't wanna just say, we've got, we got what we think is a great report, but we don't wanna, we also don't wanna hand it in, because then it becomes a public document, and it's got all of our assessments of the pluses and minuses, that sort of thing.
Absolutely.
But.
No, I can understand that.
I mean, from our perspective, this is more productive, to be honest, and I think it's important that we're all on the same page.
Right.
And I, I think that the other thing is, when, when we're dealing with, and as you said, this is a new, you know, this is a new business, this is new commerce, and I think that for us as a board, we feel the need to basically act almost above and beyond in the transparency department for this, because we wanna make sure that everybody knows that we are looking at it, understanding it, and there's, and so that's another reason why. I think we all wanted to have you come in, is just because we wanted to make sure that everybody knows that we're, you know, actively doing the best we can.
Right, well, no, we understand that, and, and, and we wanted to make sure that it's clear that we've been looking beyond the basin.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Excellent.
Yep.
Great.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good holiday.
Have a good holidays.
Build an island in Melbourne.
Golf course, contract renewal.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Motion says, motion to approve one-year renewal of contract with Sterling Golf for the management of the Maynard Golf Course. Do a second.
Second.
Okay. Agree?
So it's come and due, Mr. Chairman, the golf course.
When is it due? What's the date?
December, December thirty-first, that's when the initial contract ends.
Okay.
Uh, but there's two, there's an option to renew twice, one for one year each. So, you know, we've been meeting with Sterling Golf Management, Justin DiMarco, the DPW Director, has some experience with, with golfing himself, of course, but, but also with, we've been working with them, and, and I, he feels confident at this time recommending, and I agree as well, recommending the extension for one year, not necessarily two years. I, I don't recommend two years at this time, but do the one-year extension, that'll allow Justin a little more time to have them, like, a better understanding of how their business runs, and what sort of improvements they wanna do.
So we're talking the one year, without any of the, any of the issue items, would that be absent any of the issue items we discussed a couple weeks ago with yourself and Justin and Armin and I, and then?
So I have a letter drafted, but not yet sent, of course, because I wanted to be able to include the approval of this board, which is to, so what Mr., what the chairman is just referring to is, most of it's just the business relationship between the town and, and Sterling Golf, the upkeep and maintenance of the building itself, whether they're open to resident rates or, or otherwise, we wanna make sure that we have a good relationship and sort of mutually successful with them.
I think that that conversation we had a few weeks ago, kind of opened some eyes in the room, some ears, and, and then with Justin's knowledge of that particular type of business and his going through the contract, I'm okay with a year.
Okay.
But, but, you know, I wanna, I want them to understand that, you know, they need to understand that some of us in the room understand the golf business.
Sure.
And manage that place for thirty years.
Sure.
So you can't tell me what I know, what I know, you can't tell me what I know is wrong, you can't, you know, and, and the whole discussion around rates and all that stuff, it doesn't pan out, it doesn't even add up in their own world. What they say to us about the rates in that place do not equate to the rates they have in other places that they run. So, you know, the excuses for the, for the change in the rates, you know, if the price of X is here, the price in Stonem isn't any different than the price in Maynard, the price in Norwood isn't any different than the price in Maynard, the price in the places where they're doing business, the pricing is the same. So you can't blame it on those things, that's just discussion, that's discussions for the next contract.
Yeah, very good.
I don't have a problem doing what you're suggesting, approving to go into twenty-twenty with a one-year deal, but I want to know that, you know, I want everyone to understand, the people I'm sitting with, that there is things that we need to change.
Sure.
Going forward to protect the, the community and the citizens in the community, the residents of the community, the members there.
Sure.
Because this would be the only municipal golf course in their system and in a state where the members of the community don't get a break in the price. The only, in their world and in the golf world, municipal, municipal golf courses. That's why you have a municipal golf course.
So I got a couple of questions, I was highlighting some of the things on, on that contract.
Okay.
Now, one of the things that I was looking at is, is that when they make an investment in, when it comes to, you know, improvements.
Yeah.
That they after submit a written report to you.
Okay, so very.
How does that work?
For bringing that up, so that is not happening right now.
You know, kidding.
But that's something.
So, so can I, can I step, can I discuss?
I'm sorry, okay.
I don't know what you wanna say, but you can finish, but I sat with, I sat with Justin one day, he pulled me into his office when I was walking by, and he said, hey, come here, I wanna show you the stuff, and he went, he's going through that, so he's going through that contract.
Oh, good.
Line by line, and he's saying, this is, you know, this is wrong, this has to happen, and one of the other things he's saying is, you know, there are certain things that we've paid for.
Right.
A few times, and Justin's take on it is, no, that's their responsibility, that we've paid for some maintenance and upkeep in restrooms and whatnot that are under a certain dollar amount that they've billed us for, and he's saying, no, it's not, that's not capital, that's an expense, so, so Justin is on top of that, which is why I'm comfortable with it, otherwise I would not be comfortable.
More so to, to give them a little bit of credit, in that they're, they are pretty regularly abiding by the requirement to provide us reports, so they.
Well, it says by the fifteenth of every month.
Yeah, 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 so they, we need to be better about that, and that's on us, like, we need to be asking for that. And in my letter, I have amongst a number of points, one is, they have to provide capital requests, and I'll include with a, a capital request sheet that they'll fill out, and then they submit it to Justin, so that Mike can approve it. But additionally, sort of adherence to the letters of the, of the contract, and if they don't like that, they can negotiate otherwise.
Including the rates. I mean, that has to get submitted to you by the 31st of March.
Correct.
And then to Chris's point, there should be something in there for residents.
Well, I mean, I can ask them to consider it, but if it's not in the contract, I can't hold them to it. So, but they, but they, they are running that golf course on behalf of the town, which you represent.
Right.
So I, if they aren't entertaining, at least considering that, then it's not the best partnership.
Okay. So I'm going to take my research to Florida and check on that whole state in the next month, so. I'll see when I get back.
What's that for us?
Find my report.
Yeah, that's a hard job.
I hope my wife understands it's doing this for the town.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Give, give, give.
Anyway, you know, I appreciate what Justin's doing with the contract and I, and I, just because of, for that reason only, I agree with this suggestion and I will, I would support it, so.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any questions of Greg or anybody about this?
No.
I'm just hoping that what came out of this conversation, that we need to be holding a little bit more accountable when it comes to.
Absolutely.
It sounds like that's what's going to happen.
Yeah. We're going to try, but it, you know, we do put a lot of trust and confidence into them. I mean, that's the idea. We don't have staff to manage a golf course.
Right.
So we, so we need them to really be stepping into their role. We'll do the best we can.
But I mean, it's, and that, but that's the thing is it's not, it's not you, I mean, like, one of the things is if, if the expectation is that they need to report, we need to report by the 15th of every month, that shouldn't be something that you guys should have to chase down. That should be automatic that it shows up at Town Hall.
Ideally.
You know.
Right. Because the repercussion is that I am not as willing to advise this board to recommend an extension of their contract when the time comes, because if they're not in good partnership, maybe time to look otherwise. We're not there yet, I'm not trying to say.
Right, exactly. But, but that's the thing, like, if they really want to run our golf course, then they should actually be doing what it takes to run our golf course, so.
Okay. So all those in favor of the one-year renewal of contract? Thank you. Now we are on to the dog park license. And I'll read that motion and then we'll have the conversation. And the motion is to authorize the town administrator to negotiate a new three-year license to enter and use town-owned land for a dog park with Maynard Dog Owners Group Incorporated, known as MayDog. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, David. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi.
Is that time already?
It's that time.
It's been three years.
I can't believe it's been three years.
Time flies.
I know. So everything's good over there, I see. I go by all the time, plenty of activity.
For the record, if I may introduce us, I'm Veronica Zolina, Vice President of the Board of MayDog, and this is Ryan Kelly, who is the Secretary, recently elected. Behind us is Kelly Luvare, who's our Treasurer.
Hello. Okay, great.
So, Mr. Chairman, it is that time. Although this, you know, this being the last meeting before the new year, yes, this license will expire because it expires by December 31st. But I think, I don't know how often the dog park is used these days anyways, but I believe that, that I have confidence that we'll get this negotiated shortly either way. Like, it's, it's a pretty good relationship. I, they are relatively hands-free, I mean, so to speak, from the town side of things. But they let us know how it's going or if there's issues and I believe it's a good relationship. I don't know if they would agree. I hope they do, but I think it's good.
We absolutely do. So there are a couple of points that I just wanted to bring to the board's attention. One of them is that last spring, the head of DPW and Mr. Amico and some of us did a walk-through in the park. The town was able to assist with trimming some trees and clearing out some dead trees through your contractor. And that was great. An issue that has been waiting for some attention is an issue of water drainage in the park. And that's something that was discussed at the time of this walk-through, and we didn't know at the time that Mr. McClosco was going to be leaving.
Right.
So that's been on hold and hasn't been addressed, and it's something that we hope to address with Mr. DiMarco soon, as soon as he has time to meet with us and talk about what needs to be done and hopefully have that happen in the spring.
Did Mr. McClosco give any kind of indication as to how extensive the drainage issue was or the repair of such a thing?
Yeah, yeah, we talked about it. And Mr. Amico, I think, could probably fill in the details of what their discussion was after the fact, but when we were all there, it seemed like something that was fairly easily addressed. It involves digging out a fairly shallow channel from where the dog park entrance is down to the drop-off behind the fence. And putting in some, some special cloth, filtering cloth, and then like a pipe for drainage essentially.
A French drain, like a French drain.
Not, not, I don't think it's complicated as a French drain. I mean, we've got one of those in our driveway and it seems like an engineering situation. This seemed less complicated. But it was something that Mr. McClosco thought that DPW should handle.
Has it been an issue since day one? Was it new?
It, it's not new. It's been an issue.
So it's been, okay.
Yeah. It's been an issue with the grading of that part of the park near the two entrances.
I just don't, I just, I just don't recall hearing about it until, until now, so I didn't.
That's the overtime waters made it worse as the water keeps working its way through.
It's something that we talked to the previous town administrator about, and as I said, Mr. McClosco, so it, I think the board hasn't heard about it, but it's been something that we've been trying to work on collaboratively.
Okay.
So we're hoping that that gets addressed spring.
All right.
To address the point that was made about when, how much, how much use the park is getting in the winter, we do close pursuant to the license agreement that we have. We close when there is snow accumulation over three inches or an accumulation of ice that may create a hazard. We have to say we're getting a lot of pushback from our users who want to use the park during the snow and ice, but we're communicating and trying to explain. Part of the rationale in coming up with that solution, and we're open to be flexible about it, of course, was that town wanted, among other things, emergency access through the big emergency gate, it's not the dog entrance, in the event that somebody deep in the park falls down, has an issue, ambulance has to come. So that's part of the reason that we close when we have that type of accumulation, because it would not be accessible.
So when you say closed, what, how do you mean by closed?
We physically close the park.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Oh, you put up a sign and nice.
We do, yeah. We flip our sign around.
I do monitor the Facebook page, and I want to commend whoever does it. They're, hmm?
It's a group effort.
Group effort, nice.
Because there, you know, I've seen the pushback and the fights.
Thank you.
The online fights that start. And I do, as I say, I monitor it. I'm not a, I don't comment on it at all, just to see what's going on. And I do think that you are acting very, very responsibly relative to the issues that are ongoing.
Thank you.
At the park. I saw, you know, one of my concerns when this whole thing went down was liability for the town. I think that that's addressed, and I think that's part of the reason why we asked for it to be closed in the wintertime, because you don't want to have somebody slipping fall and whatever, as well as plowing and, and everything else that goes along with it. I did see a few weeks back that some dog, all I remember was a little white dog, and it had an awful bite on it.
Yes. Well, that's debatable whether it was a bite or not. We're not arguing about it with the person, but yeah.
But you know, those, those were the types of concerns that we, that we had back at the time when we first were negotiating. But I think your predecessors in leadership in MayDog, as well as this new group that's come in, has really done a good job. So congratulations and thank you for monitoring it.
Thank you very much. We appreciate hearing that. So what did I want to, oh, so what I wanted to say was that if the board approves the motion for us to negotiate with the town administrator in developing the new agreement, whether it looks a lot like the old agreement or not, it will happen. I would ask, though, that the board consider extending the current license for two or three months to give us time to do that with an actual license in place.
Wait, see, what, a temporary license?
Something like that. I mean, essentially, the license that we currently have, all the terms and conditions to remain in place.
Ends on December 31st, so.
Right, just to give us time.
So this, this new one won't be in time.
No, I understand, you'd be operating without a license otherwise.
Yeah.
But I don't have that prepared, so we would have, so they could change a motion to extend this particular license, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah.
But I could have something probably by, maybe the January 7th or the meeting after or after, something a little more written down. Otherwise, yes, it's up to the chair if he wants to entertain that motion.
Well, I guess I don't have the ability to make the motion, I'm just suggesting. I just, you know, I'm not sure what negative effect there would be of us continuing with a license that expired December 31st until we have a new one. It just doesn't feel like the right thing to do.
Depends on the enforcement, so considering we all know who's operating it.
Right.
In other words, I'm not, I'm not worried about it.
Neither am I.
But if, but if you would like the board to do it, then it's up to them.
Well, I think if we, if we're, if we extend it, that kind of protects everybody.
Sure.
And if we don't extend it and something happens, somebody's, either the town is unprotected or these guys are unprotected or the users of the park, so I don't, I think it would be. I mean, you know.
It would make sense, I think.
To your point, everybody knows who's running it, who's doing what, and everyone's comfortable with each other, so I don't, I think there's only harm can come from not extending it until, you know, extend it for 90 days, you know, a finite period. How do you want, how would you suggest?
I recommend. You don't have to do 90 days. In fact, you could just say until successful negotiations for, and the approval of a, of a new contract.
Do you guys agree, I mean?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, I think to your point, don't put a timeline on it because you don't know how long it's going to take, so you don't kind of.
Or you could. I mean, I think we'll have it wrapped up and it won't take that long. But it, yeah.
Okay, so, all right, I would, I would, well, we have to.
You will have to do a new motion.
All right, so we, let's just do this. We've, we have put in, seconded a motion to authorize the town administrator to negotiate a new three-year license.
That's right.
So we can vote on that. So all in favor of that? And so, so we have that done.
Okay.
Now, I suggest we make, I make, I will make a motion to extend the current contract until such time as a new contact, new contract is negotiated and agreed upon.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion about that motion? All those in favor of that motion?
Very good.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, so now we're throwing you to those votes.
Yeah, you guys have a lot there.
Happy holidays.
You're in good hands.
Thank you. Wolves are almost like dogs, so.
So we do appreciate how great it runs over there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Good to hear.
Thanks. Okay, Mr. Budget Development Team.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Although there is a motion, but I can, I can kind of introduce before, if you would like. Would you like me to speak to it and then you can do the motion?
Motion to approve extension of deadline to January 21st for submission of capital improvement plan by the Capital Planning Committee for fiscal year 2021.
Second. Or was that a confused?
No, that's, you can second it. I'm just.
All right, very good. So, so, Mr. Chairman, per the charter, the Capital Planning Committee is required to submit a capital plan, a five-year capital plan by, and I see the December 31st or January 1st, I'm reading very quickly. It's the first day of January.
January 1st.
That's right. However, we have a brand-new Capital Planning Committee, and so new that they've even had a kind of a fluctuation of membership, but they do have three members now. Hopefully, two more if anyone wants to join, but they'd be meeting with Mike.
Dave, you're here.
Oh.
You're on.
You're the only, you're the only one left.
My name and then, what was the question?
I'm joking.
Everything else is done.
So, so they'd be meeting with Mike and Mike Guzzo, Finance Director, and they're really doing a lot of good work. I have a lot of confidence in them, but they're just, with the holidays now, they just don't have time to get a solid plan that they're comfortable with. So I pitched them and they thought it was a great idea. And I also informed Ken Esserbrock, the Finance Committee Chair, because the, their report is required to be submitted to both the Selectment and the Finance Committee. But that report has, is an assessment of the data that is provided by the town administrator's office. So I've been given, Dave Cragger, who's the Chair of the Capital Planning Committee, information when I get it according to capital item requests, funding schemes, and as I said, Finance Director Mike Guzzo's been meeting with them. And they thought the 21st would be good, because that'll, that, that is the same time as when, per charter, the town administrators recommended budget for the next fiscal years due the Selectment. So it would be all together.
I don't have a problem in extending it. I just wonder, does the board have authority to change required charter language?
I believe you, no, you're not changing the charter.
I, I know we're not changing it permanently, but we're, we're taking something that's in the charter and saying, well, we'll extend that out. For example, there was one year that, that Saturday meeting in February, we couldn't have it on the date that the charter required it to be.
Okay.
So we actually had to come here, two of us came or three of us came here or whatever, opened a meeting and then extended the meeting to a time certain, because we couldn't change the language of the, we could not alter the charter requirements. So we held the meeting, but it, but it never was held because we just moved it along.
So I, but I think that, I think we're applying the same concept here. We, the enforcement of that deadline per charter is the Selectment and the Finance Committee. And if both those bodies consent to an extension, then you are meeting the requirements, like you are, you are allowing that extension. So I, you're not changing the charter, you're just saying, did they make the deadline? No. Is that, but does everyone understand?
And we're saying that's acceptable.
Yeah, so I think, I advise it.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not.
Yeah.
I'm not pushing back, I'm just saying, we, if, are we making a motion that's basically an illegal motion?
I don't believe we are.
To extend a deadline on a charter.
But you've never really adhered to the charter in the past.
Well, that's, that's one argument. Although we had, we had a Capital Planning Committee made up of, you know, department heads that theoretically, that theoretically submitted their, their capital plan, and that was submitted to the board shortly thereafter. Was there actually paperwork that was submitted? No. And prior to that, there was a Capital Planning Committee that never met, so.
So this is just kind of formalizing what has been, this is actually asking permission.
So that's the point I'm making, is that, is that you would not have gotten a report on the January 1st.
Right.
So, yeah.
I mean, they are very close, just put that out.
Yep.
No, and I don't have a problem in extending it, I just wanted to make sure we're not doing something that somebody could say, that's an illegal motion or that's an illegal, illegal vote or whatever.
No, good.
Was it a football game? Illegal motion.
Huh?
Okay. So I guess, does anybody object to the approval of the deadline? So all those in favor?
Very good.
Mr. Johnson, anything to add to the administrator's report?
So the, so before I get to the administrator's report, let me just give a quick update to the, to the budget. So admittedly, Mike Guzzo, Finance Director, has the bulk of the work right now, trying to crunch all the numbers, both, it's really the balancing game. It's what we do every year is what most municipalities do every year. It's balancing what the expected revenue is according to what our budget requests are. And I would say every week we get, we get new estimates, whether it be from our health insurance, whether it be from what local aid may be, so that's from the state, although that is very much up in the air. School, school committee is actually, to give them credit, they, they have actually been very cooperative, and so they're giving us information as well. That was, that was the update I want to give. I have been sharing updates with the Budget Subcommittee, but even though those numbers are very much working numbers, so publicly, I'm not prepared to give the budget because it's not, it's just not there yet anyways. But we do, per, per, every year, we have a significant shortfall. We have to, so there's, it's a, we have to offset the revenue versus our high demand and expense requests. It's typical every year.
Okay.
So that's it, Mr. Chairman. Now, for the town administrator's report, I do want to point out a couple of, it's a, it's an extensive report, and I hope the whole public looks at every word of it, please. Couple of things to highlight.
Well, most of it's already happened because.
You're right.
We're six days behind, so.
So we did close Town Hall last Friday.
Yeah.
It was, I thought it was a very successful training that we had on behalf of Town Hall staff, and, and police and fire and, that was very good. And Town Hall closes tomorrow at noon, and it will be closed for the holiday on Wednesday. And then again, next week, same schedule, Tuesday noon, and then the Wednesday for New Year's. I myself will be going on personal time starting Friday, this Friday, and I will be returning the next Thursday. Assistant Town Administrator Megan Simo will be present at that time. Town's in good hands. And I'm looking through, if there's anything else I want to highlight right now. We're in the thick of budget season, I would have to say that's definitely the focal point of my work these days. Anything else you want to add, Megan?
Nope, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good. I think that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So, the Chairman's report piece, on the two January meetings, January 7th, I won't be here, and I've asked Mr. Gavin to chair that meeting, and he has agreed.
Okay.
Do we need to, we don't need to take any type of vote for that, right?
Actually, I would recommend you do, because you've already named Selectment St. John as the interim clerk, so she's the only other existing officer of the board right now. So that would be, so, and otherwise, I would expect actually the default to be Ms. St. John. So if you wanted to be Mr. Gavin, that's fine, but you should vote.
So, all right, so I make a motion that we name David Gavin Chairman for the January 7th, 2020 meeting.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Okay, very good.
All right. And then, on the, so David and I were talking about the 28th. We were both under the impression that the January 21st meeting had already been moved to the 28th.
I can confirm that.
So if it hasn't been,
Oh.
I make a motion that we move the January 21st meeting to January 28th. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor? So that's, that's done, if it wasn't done.
Very good.
But we thought, David and I both had it down as being done in the past, so.
Well, you know what, sometimes.
Yes, whatever. Anyway, so it's done now. But, and other than that, I, I, the timing and the days off and stuff, I'm all screwed up, and I'm not sure if we had a meeting, if we've had a meeting since the LIU and the TAP and all that took place. I don't know that we have.
No.
But I just wanted to, you know, thank everybody involved in that from our end, because it was a great exercise, it was a good day of having a lot of people that aren't typically in our town, in our town, looking at any number of things and coming up with some suggestions for us. And, you know, it was all volunteers, except for the, you know, except for the two or three people that were state agencies. And so it's, it's much appreciated. I, you know, I wouldn't mean to be negative about it earlier, but it just seems like there's just so much that wasn't what I thought it would be. I was thinking we were getting help with traffic flow and, you know, traffic analysis in that area, as opposed to some of the things that they came up with that were just didn't, I mean, it seems like we were going to take out parking almost altogether in some instances, you know, for the basin, which isn't really the goal.
Actually, their proposal in the end is to take out all parking.
Yeah, so, so, well, I, well, I don't,
They want to have a space.
Well, I don't necessarily agree with the suggestions, some of the suggestions, I do, as, as someone in, in, in this seat and in this community, appreciate the time and the effort that everybody put in on that day, because it was a long day for a lot of people, and it, some great ideas, some not so great ideas, just in the fact that they just don't seem to fit with who we are as a community. Because I think that, that's difficult when you come into such a small town, from, all those people were from, you know, Boston, Brooklyn, Cambridge, big cities, and they came out to Maynard, and it's a little different, but.
But they made some great, you know, what do you call, analysis.
Great, I mean, great discussion.
Some great discussion, some good stuff, though, even if we don't do what they say, there are ideas that we could start.
Yeah, to the point of, you know, the trash issue with, with open table and all that, it gets the discussion started, so it was great from that perspective, but, so I just want to say that I did appreciate that. We had our second meeting of the Maynard Human Relations Committee last week, and the, the actual members of the committee are going to, excuse me, they're going to look into some, some wording changes in, in the charge of the committee and that type of stuff, because they, they see things a little differently than, than, you know, the Police Chief, who actually wrote the original documents, and they're looking into some other language about, some other stuff, and they'll get back to us when they, when they get through with it, I guess. I'm not sure what they're looking to in some respects, but they're looking at land, land, something to do with Nipmuck Indians and the land we sit on, and a land, land, land statement?
Yeah.
I think it's a land statement, you know, I don't know the exact word. But anyways, how this is Indian land, and we're on Indian land, and we should recognize we're on Indian land and all that, so, I don't know, I kind of feel like the land I sit on is mine, because I pay my taxes every year, but that's just me.
We're going on a reservation.
Second, finally, for me, last night, the three of us, Armand was, Armand was unavailable, and Greg was there, and a lot of other people went to downtown Maynard and took part in the lighting of Maynard's menorah. In the previous week, you know, most of the same people were there for the sip and stroll, two great nights, Maynard, Maynard community coming out and supporting different groups and different members of the community in the holidays and stuff, so. Lauren Bell, who we had a little over a year ago to discuss setting the menorah up and getting it up off the ground, he sent a letter to me that he said he'd like me to pass on to the whole BOS. I think it's appropriate to share it with the, the community in general, because it's, it speaks to how things went last night. It says, "Hi, Chris, I just wanted to thank you and the entire Board of Selectmen again, not just for your kind words last night, at last night's event, but for all the support from day one. Getting the green light from you and the Board of Selectmen cleared the way, but it also meant a lot to me personally." As Rebecca, his wife, was walking down Brook Street to the park last night, they stopped with their son Jacoby, and she told him, "You see that huge crowd down there, standing around the big menorah? Your dad did that for you." And, you know, so he's, he's happy for that, and he's pleased, and he said, every year, he and Josh will have something to look at and feel as if they are important part of Maynard too, that they're accepted and valued and loved here, and that confidence and connectedness will clear the way for them to do great things in Maynard and beyond, so. He wishes us the best and thanks us, and it was, it's a great message from him. And I think last night, you know, Rabbi Mike and Jamie Eldridge and Kate, you know, the words that they spoke were, you know, fantastic, just showed, you know, how great a community we live in, and the fact that there was, I believe, in excess of 100 people, some people, I guess maybe close to 150, there was quite a bit of people there last night, shows that, you know, we are an accepting community, we are a community that cares about our brothers and sisters and all the different, you know, races and religions and everything in town. So it was a good night for Maynard, I thought, and.
Absolutely.
Very nice.
It was a great night, and that's all I have, so, other than Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to my Selectmen friends here, and to you guys as well, and anybody else that is paying attention, thank you. Best wishes for a happy holiday season, it's, it's almost over now, but
Yeah.
There you have it. So, that, see you guys next year. Armand?
Yeah, so to that point, is there a way for us to pursue a citation for Lauren? Is that something that we could maybe talk, talk to Kate and Jamie? Is that something that we should pursue?
Oh, so, right, so you can do one on behalf of the board, as well as we could request.
Yeah, can we do that? I think it'd be.
We can do, I, I mean, we can do something, I think.
Right.
I guess.
I mean, I'm just, you know,
I don't know.
I think you put a lot of effort into that.
Yeah, we can, I think, I, and I'm not, I'm not saying no to that, because I agree, but it's, it's almost like that the menorah being there is
It's an, a ready.
Almost his citation, but I don't have a problem with offering him, you know, a citation of thanks, or something from the, from the town side for.
I mean, I don't know if you guys agree to that, I'm just.
There's some reasons, I agree, we can do something for, you know, to thank him for providing the town with what, you know, what the menorah provides the town with, which is, you know, quite a bit actually, on the, from the spiritual side.
I mean, if you don't, you know, he left a legacy now, because that's a legacy that he's going to leave to the town for a long time, so.
No, I, I don't have a problem with, with doing something, I guess, maybe just think what's, what's appropriate for that type of, type of thing, but.
Just shoot me an email, if you have like an idea.
No.
I mean, it sounds like, I wrote down some of the stuff that you were just saying, but if you have something, a line or two.
I don't, I don't have a, I mean, I have no objection to it, I think that.
Some type of recognition, I mean, I don't know.
To get it together, to do it as quick as he did, and to have it,
Exactly.
You know, everything work as well as it did, and come off as great as it did,
Yeah.
is, is almost a miracle these days.
I was actually going to ask.
Yeah, you know, the great part about it was, he didn't have a committee, he didn't have a group, he did it himself.
But that's, that's my point.
It's one man did it himself, got it done.
And had a baby.
And he had a baby.
And had a baby in the meantime.
Yeah.
So I, I absolutely think it was.
I was going to ask him, so who's responsible for coming every night and lighting up the other bulbs?
No, it's automatic.
Oh, it's automatic!
So tonight, so.
I think that's, they started the button last night.
So there was a problem with the light the other night, the middle, the center light.
Yeah.
So Greg, not Greg, Justin went out and helped do something to get that working. But now, according to Lauren,
At a certain time, on the timer?
So Rabbi Mike pressed the button last night, the menorah lit, and now tonight, when it comes back on at, like, you know, this, I think 5:50.
It's on already.
So when it comes on tonight, there should be two lights.
There is two lights.
And then it's on at 3:00, so it will do it itself.
Nice.
So it's automatic, yeah.
Cool. I was going to say, because who's going there to turn it on?
It's quite a structure, but I, I, I'm nervous around it, because whenever somebody bumps into it, it really shakes. Like, it looks, it looks to me like it's, the base needs to be beefed up, but that's a whole different discussion for next year, but it's, but that's, so it's automatic, no one has. And I said that to him, I said, you know, you need to tell people that they don't have to come back next, tomorrow night, because some people might want to come back and see the second.
See the second of it.
And they didn't say it, but he said, oh, everyone knows, I said, I hope so.
It's exciting.
Only do it for the first night.
But no, you know, it was, it was kind of a.
I'm sorry, I missed it, it's exciting.
You know, it was kind of, it was kind of an interesting, an interesting night to see, you know, what other, another, another group of people do for their celebration of a holiday and, and everything else. And then, when you read further about it, they say, well, it's really not a celebration. I'm like, okay, but anyway, so that's, that was great to see.
The only other thing that I have to comment on is, as you all know, I try to attend as many economic development meetings as possible, and I have to say that the last one that I attended has to be probably one of the most exciting ones I've attended, and I want to thank Megan for pulling it all together, because I, I just, I have, you know, some promising and encouraging things happening at Millinmayne, in my opinion, at this time. So to see those excitement, I, I think it's going to create an opportunity for the new internal so-called, you know, leasing department is going to help, be very helpful. So that was a great, great meeting, Megan, and then I think the Economic Development Committee in general is doing a real nice job.
Could we get, you know, just to piggyback on Armand's point, could we get, maybe at some point in the spring, early spring or something, you know, after the budget February meeting, maybe before the town meeting, maybe get them to come in and kind of just give us a, hey, here's where we're at.
You're talking about the Millinmayne?
Millinmayne, just because, you know, there was, you know, I don't know, was it four or five years ago, David, four years ago? They came and they had signs everywhere, and it was that, you know, Millinmayne is the new name, and they had a lot of plans, and they seemed to have scaled it back a little bit, so I'm just kind of curious where they're at with that whole, the original concept that was shared by the original group, and then where we're at today, and where we're going, just because people ask all the time, and you feel like a, like a knucklehead, because you're like, I don't know, you know, they don't tell us.
Okay.
And I think that was the first step that Megan took, and it was, to me, it was eye opener, because I think they're changing their tune a little bit, and they're, at least seems like they're looking at from a, from a different, you know, lenses now, that's not what they used to think, so. Having an internal, in my opinion, an internal leasing group, it is, it is very important.
Have they, from what they said at this meeting, have they backed away from their idea of having retail in that space?
So, I mean, there's a few different players, you know, there's the owner, the two, there's two different owners, and then the group that came into the Economic Development Committee is Lincoln Properties, and they manage the property and have for a while, but now they have, they used to have external leasing agents.
Right, it's in the house now.
And now Lincoln Property has taken over the leasing, and they seem to have an aggressive approach, and I think that's what we were kind of talking about. But as for retail in the mail, I think, you know, it sounded like they're open to any size business. You know, they are pursuing larger creative office clients, and they're trying to get the businesses that, you know, say, well, I want something in wall fam to come and take a look at Maynard, and take the drive out here, and they've found some creative ways to create broker incentives to get out here, which I think will just benefit Maynard, you know, all around. But, no, I think they, they still sound like they're open to different types of tenants, not just large, not just small.
So one, when they first came with the new ownership, they were talking about, you know, there was going to be basically a street of, of
Retail.
Retail.
Yeah, on Main Street.
On, no, inside, inside the property.
Almost where you,
Or inside the garden.
In, in that area where you're pointing right now, going right through, that was it.
Sort of like, I don't know if you've been to Assembly Row?
Sure, yeah.
Assembly Row was sort of how they, how it was almost pictured.
I mean, yeah, that didn't, that doesn't seem to be the approach right now.
Now, are they pursuing it all, and I don't know if it's them, or if it's us, or, or who it is, a possibility of, you mentioned wall, getting, you know, people from wall fam coming out, or whatever, the, is it the BioSafe, or whatever, for the, for Bio, I'm trying to think of it, for Biology Industries?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good question, and they're, they kind of had more of a high level conversation at the EDC, but they're coming in, I think, next week or in two weeks to meet with town staff, and we'll kind of ask more about that. But I do know that, you know, some of the environmental concerns with the condition of the building and the amount of remediation that would need to be done for kind of a clean lab
Okay.
could be expensive, and so they've kind of gone in the direction of, of an office style.
Yep, yep.
But I don't think it's off the, you know, out of the question. And actually, Caitlin Young in our office just went to a meeting about, about that kind of thing, and told, and brought back information that I haven't really studied yet, but, you know, how to get Maynard on the map in that area.
Bill Nem's excited, you got Bill Nem's excited about that one.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, he sent something out, I think he shared that information, so.
Because that's Jill.
Pena Grace.
Yes, oh, yeah, congratulations on that, too, too.
Yeah, who'd offer to help as well.
Yep.
And we will take her up on that, 100%.
Yep, it's awesome.
Yes, sir.
Just a few about their largest tenant, Communications, was purchased by Cisco.
We know.
So I think it's at least worth asking if they know what the intentions are of Cisco.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything else?
No, I'm good, thank you.
David?
Yeah, a couple of quick things. First one is, we talked, what, now a month ago, a month and a half ago, when we had our tax rate hearing, about the split tax rate, the whole issue of small business exemption and whatever. I would like to ask if we could see if the Board of Assessors would engage a study relative to what would have been the effect over the last, say, three to five years, had the board, had the Board of Assessors recommended and we implemented a small business exemption? What would have been the impact on certain businesses? I'm told by a member of the Board of Assessors that that information is fairly readily available, and they should be able to prepare a, a report to us. And that, what that does is make it so that next year, when, when the board sits down to do a tax assessment, we're not asking questions about information that might be available, so that we have an understanding of what the impact may be. Who knows if it's positive, negative, or otherwise, but at least we'd have the studies to show us.
Wouldn't we, so, wouldn't that be for, I mean, and that's great, but wouldn't we want the current information for next year, so maybe in, like, October, prior to the tax hearing?
However, they, I would leave it up to the assessors, who are more well-versed on what the, way that they can gather the information, but I was told specifically by a member of the board that they can gather the information, and that they want to gather the information. The discussion that we had here generated some energy on that, on that front. I think also, I also heard from the, and it would probably be a strange dynamic, but I also heard from the, from, now I'm drawing a blank, the, from Sarah Cressy, who said she also wanted to do an assessment from the business standpoint.
Yeah, where are we there? Because she was looking into doing something.
Sarah Cressy?
Yeah, she was.
Yeah, but she never made that public, she just.
Oh, I have no idea, this is the first I've heard.
No, this is the first you've heard of it, she never made it public, she just told me that she was interested in doing a similar study.
Have you seen, yeah. I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
She's with the, you know, yeah. Then, just totally coincidental, I got contacted by a member of the Board of Assessors, who said, "Ask us to do this, because we will do it." And, you know, so.
We can ask Sarah about, yeah.
And I don't know where Sarah is, I have not reached out to Sarah after she initially reached out to me.
Here's a question, why wouldn't they just do it and give it to us? Like, why would we have to ask?
That's very true.
Why wouldn't they give it to us as part of their, their
Their report.
Their report, to suggest that this is what they want, here's why? Because we sit here and ask that same question
Every year.
All the time, if it's.
I don't know. I mean, they, they, they feel like they're fulfilling their charge, it is, as their appointing authority, you, you tell them whether or not they are fulfilling their charge. So it's not, it's not unheard of for the board to tell them, this is what else we want you to do.
Yeah, but if there's, okay.
But that's the message I can say, probably.
No, and.
But I'll, I can look into it, that's what I'll do.
No, and I, I think, yes, it, it is their role to say, here is what the Board of Assessors is recommending.
Yeah.
But I believe what's missing is, and here is the supporting documents to suggest as to why.
Sure.
Instead of, we're suggesting it, well, why, well, that's what we've done before. Every Board of Selectmen has ever, has always done that. That's not an answer that we should be relying upon.
So, again, that's a conversation to have beforehand as well, the, when we're reviewing the packet
I agree.
At home, to say,
Totally agree.
Hey, you know, just, could you bring this to the meeting, to give them a heads up that it is going to be a question that we're going to ask, so that way they can, they could have an idea for them.
And then my other point is, again, last night was a great event, it actually, that little song, which I'd never heard before, was somewhat emotional, you know, was hearing these people that were really into it, and, you know, so, I think it was really touching. But as I was coming to the event, our new ramp had not been cleared, and
Okay.
So I tried to walk up it, and probably took my life into my hands.
Hope you held the railing, that's.
Yeah.
Okay.
And going back, the same thing, so I don't know, I don't think they can fit the plow truck.
I don't know, but well.
But if we're going to leave it open there, if it's going to be open in the winter, we probably should have a sign or something that says, maybe Slippery, or we have an obligation, I think, to clear it.
Okay, okay.
That's the first year that's been, right, first winter.
That's true, it may not have just, yeah, but I'll definitely bring it up.
And then I will echo Chris's comment about Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody, and, you know, renewal and all that stuff that, that we have, and we live in a wonderful community, and I think, you know, there's so much good going on that we should recognize that, so, you know, Merry Christmas, enjoy, and happy holidays for those who don't celebrate Christmas, and, and, you know, enjoy your family, enjoy the time to sort of renew the energy. That's it.
I feel more exhausted these days, but I will try to get some energy, and as I'm, those of us with very small children will also try to get.
And that goes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I have a strange schedule coming up for work myself. I work tomorrow, then I have Thursday, Wednesday and Thursday off, I work Friday, and then I have Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday off, so.
Mia?
Hi.
Hello, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a couple of things, and primarily, it's Budget Subcommittee recap, which was.
You guys are doing an awesome job there.
Well, thank you, thank you.
That is very impressive, I mean, really.
It's, I think that it's a great, it's a great avenue to have everybody collaborate and work together. I think it's really helpful to have everybody see at least where, you know, at least two members of each Board see where the other members are coming from, or what, why they're concerned about things. You know, as I think, as Greg alluded to, I think you alluded to this, that there is, you know, looking at it right now, right now, the preliminary numbers, there is obviously a shortfall, and that is something that we discuss. I've only been in this seat for two years, but this is the, you know, this is something we discuss every year, and it's something that, you know, it, we are doing our best, and actually, I say we, but it's the administration, my Guzzo, Greg, everyone else, to figure out a way to continue to provide the level of services that the town is accustomed to and pretty much demand at this point. But unfortunately, that cost goes up, and, and so it is a definite balance, and I think that everybody is trying their hardest to do what they can and prioritize what they can and move forward. So, I commend everyone for their work on that, and I appreciate it. Another avenue of that is, one of the conversations that we have been having is the fire station. And the question is, one thing is to whether or not we are going to possibly move forward to have a vote on this for the town meeting in May. The first step of that, that Greg is waiting for, is actually a direction from the Board of Selectmen. So, I'm wondering, actually, if you're not going to be here on the 7th, probably not have the discussion then, so it would probably have to be pushed.
You can, well, it's just fine, because I'll submit my budget with, I'll just tell you right now, it will include my recommendation for funding that, and then, and then, because it's your budget, you don't have to, you can do with what you will, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, maybe we can, so we can discuss that on the 28th or whatnot, to give you direction, or we'll figure that all out then.
Very good.
So.
But I included my notes as to what, as to what you're referring to, Ms. St. John, so, yeah.
No, I appreciate that. And other than that, I know the other thing that we, that we did bring up and we did discuss is the fact that the MSBA did reach out and offer a preliminary interview-ish thing. I don't have the words in front of me, but it's, it's not the feasibility, but there's a questionnaire that needs to be filled out and things like that. So, there is also a possibility that we could be accepted into that program.
Statement of interest, is that what the?
Is it a statement of interest?
This is like step one before step one.
Exactly, it's, you know.
It's a, it's a process.
It's a very lengthy process. I'm actually thankful for how lengthy the process is, because I think that that's.
Buys a little time for us.
It buys a lot of, yeah.
So, it's, so it's time, you have some time, but this timeframe, in reading that document, there are definitely things that have to be done by specific dates.
Correct, yes.
I guess, I'm going to assume that, you know, the town administrator and the superintendent's officer discussing in that, those type of things, and, you know, I guess we need to find out who's, you know, here's that list of things, what, who's responsible for what on that list?
Those are exactly the questions that we were asking them as well. I'm trying to be as cooperative as possible, as I suspect.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying, so, we've had things of this nature occur before, you know, not just, not recently, but in, over time, you know, who's, who's responsible for step one, step two, step three, you know, kind of like that document that we got from Brendan in the Master Steering Planning Committee?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
They kind of, here's 12 pages of data, and, you know, here's who's, who's got this one, who's got that one. Actually, personally, I, I thought it was a great piece, great exercise in reading, but it seemed to me that there was a lot of things where we kind of have a part that our initiatives were next to, and some things where I didn't think we had a part that our initiatives were next to. I've been kind of going through that and checking those off, and I'm going to send them back to them, but that type of document for that process, for the, for, you know, MSBA process.
Yeah, we can do that, because the document that it's on the, on the, there is, was